Progress in education, the Board of Eders responds to education needs in our community. And in doing so, helps strengthen the New York State educational system and improve the future prospects for our children. This year, October 16th, 8:00 AM is recognition of school boards of education. So we want to recognize our Board of Education, and kind of a funny note, a little bit, but is your cutting boards. Now it's a little early, we're not getting to cutting tonight. I was joking with the kids that Mr. Storms, we're getting cutting boards. Now, are any of the students here that made the cutting boards? So I'm going to tell you who they all are. Skylar Wilson is a 10th grade student, Brandon Reynolds is a 12th grade student, Kail Butcher is an 11th grade student, Amy Provost is a 10th grade student, RJ Hornstein is a 9th grade student, and they are all in manufacturing class that we have here at Peru. Mr. Sorrell is our teacher, and so those are appreciations of the hard work that you do. So if we can give the Board of Education a round of applause for the work that they're doing.
Thank you very much. The picture was up there that showed, I mean, they're just, I think they probably went 20 miles, 20 miles. That's just amazing what it is. If anybody wants to take a look at it, it's just beautiful. So thank you very much. Thanks, Denise.
Absolutely.
Just wonderful. Okay, I have a motion to approve the agenda by the side.
I wasn't going to correct you.
Somebody says, "Thank you on the work." We're approve the agenda with a removal of 15C for further research, and correction on 14C with number three, the date has to be 2023, and another appointment in 15. Okay, so I have a motion. Motion, Mr. Webanero, on favor? Anybody opposed? Motion carry. Approval of the minutes of September 12th. I have a motion. Mr. Webanero, second. Mrs. Mitchell, on favor? No one opposed? Then we had the recognition. And do we have anybody for comment?
I have anyone signed up before.
Okay, and our Peru comments on our email, didn't have anyone either. So, Mr. Storms.
So tonight, we have a few things to talk about. First, we have District Superintendent Mark Davy here, and Assistant Superintendent for Educational Services, Amy Campbell, here to talk to us a little bit about CVES. So welcome.
Good evening, Board President Barry, Vice President Mitchell, members of the Board, who are BOSI's board members. Mr. Webanero, we want to acknowledge and thank you as well. But good evening, and to the crew Board of Education, as well as your leadership team, your administrators, your parents, your staff. Thank you for the opportunity for us to be here. Mr. Storms, I know you have a busy meeting. We've had discussions. So Mrs. Barry is Board President, Mrs. Mitchell is Vice President. We thank you for allowing us to come and share. We may be a little briefer tonight than we might have been last year, but I know we had a wonderful experience, you know, introducing your students and hearing about them last year. This evening, it's our pleasure, and my pleasure, to have Mrs. Amy Campbell, our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, here to share information about our school support services. And I know that she was a former Director of Curriculum and Instruction for Peru, and was really reconnecting, and I know very well thought of. So it's a pleasure for her to be here with us tonight. With that said, I'd like to just provide a couple of quick updates about CVES. And I'm very pleased, on behalf of CVES, to share with you our new CBS folders. So these are brand new. So we've shared them around our audience a little bit with your administrative team. They are hot off the press, and we actually have updated them this year. So on the front, really is a snapshot about CVES as a whole. And on the back, we have our updated mission and vision, and our core beliefs. And with that said, we also have our CBS administration, and our 23, 24 BOSI's board members. So our Board of Cooperative Educational Services. I would be remiss without acknowledging Mr. Webanero, who joined us in May. And thank you for your support, and for nominating him, and also for allowing him to serve as a representative of your community. He's doing a great job. He's engaged. He's attending lots of events. I know he's an active board member on your board, but he's also becoming, and has been, an active board member for CBS. So, Mr. Webanero, we're thrilled. You're working with us and a member of our BOSI's board. So thank you for that. I also like to offer a special thank you as well to Mr. Storms. Mr. Storms, as one of our component school superintendents, you bring a tremendous amount of experience, a high level of respect. You're an active and contributing member of our Chief School Officers group. We have lots of conversations about how we can support each other, as well as the services, state ed updates. And so Mr. Storms, each month, is an active member of our Chief School Officer meeting. He also attends our virtual meetings as well, and is an active contributor in our text group. And, Mr. Storms, you really have shown your leadership, your support for your school, for your district, but also for our chief school officers, and have been an active member. So thank you for your leadership, and we look forward to our continued work together. With that said, we want to just acknowledge a little bit more about your information. You do have a CBS summary sheet. And as in the past, we've provided a summary sheet about Peru's involvement and support for Champlin Educational Services as our BOSI's. As a reminder, and Miss Kara, you have worked with us over the past, and I know, congratulations on your role as business official now. And you'll see that the 23, 24 current aid ratio is 74.9 cents. Now, that is an average, but generally, majority of your services do receive almost 75 cents on a dollar reimbursement. Now, for the public, New York State recognizes the Cooperative Service Agreements. It's an incentivized agreement. It's one of the most progressive in the nation, that actually provides state aid to encourage shared services. So by districts sharing those services, Peru does receive money back on the services you participate through the BOSI's. With that said, you can see an overview of our administrative services as well, whether it's our administrative capital budget, our health and workers' compensation service, the insurance consortium. Just as a snapshot, the insurance consortium is over $100 million. Approximately 4,500 policies and over 10,000 lives. And that's in our benefits office, helps support and organize and coordinate with that. You can go through each one of those areas as well under administrative, and see all different areas that you're supporting and part of, including the school food service management. And I know we've been very excited to have you to partner with us. The salad bars, the homegrown, and the made from scratch meals, you know, just in general, we're so pleased that you're partnering with us on that. And I know we're happy that it's serving your needs well, and really providing good nutrition for all your students. That's critical, especially for breakfast and lunches. You look at our career and tech education. I know last year, Mrs. Friedman, our distinguished Director of Career and Technical Education, joined us, and with some of your students. Just a little update, this year, our enrollment across CVES is 860 students. So it's up from 787 or 788 last year. And Peru sends 89 students to our CV tech programs. So thank you for that support. You also send 23 special education students. So we thank you for that, and your support with this residue, and really being an active member of all of our services, both at the special education level, but the career and technical education centers as well. We're also thrilled, not only to share with you the different special education programs that we, your students are part of, whether it's 611, the 811 academic behavior, the 811 life skills, as well as the other services as well. And lastly, you can see a summary of the school support services, and the cross-contracts. Mrs. Campbell is going to share the school support services information, and provide really an update for the board on that. So I'll turn that over to her momentarily. And lastly, you have, in your updated folder, you have updated fact sheets. So these are speed sheets, which are also available online. And so the information is live on our website, but you'll have an updated 23, 24 speed sheet about our BOSI's, CVES as a whole, as well as a summary and a snapshot of all of our services from the different divisions on the back. You have an updated CV tech speed sheet, which is also live on the website. So if you do go to the website, you can click on any one of these particular areas. There are videos, there are links, there's information about those programs. So if your students, your parents, your guidance counselors would like to gather more information, it's all available at the click of the mouse. You have, lastly, a snapshot for our RISE Center for Success, part of our rebranding. That's our new name for our special education division as well, with really the emphasis that we specialize. And that we provide high-quality services to your students, and support for your special education students, and our services, and we're very proud to share that as well. So that information is all available for your preview and review. With that said, I'm now pleased to turn the floor over to Mrs. Amy Campbell. You do have a whole section of information. Mrs. Campbell is going to walk through the school support services. We are thrilled, I'm thrilled, to introduce Mrs. Campbell as our Assistant Superintendent of Education Services. She's now been with us three years. She's doing an amazing job, collaborates with our leaders. She's a statewide leader and recognized for her work across the state with all of the BOSI's. She's also an active visible leader in the region, in her role supporting our principals, supporting all of our school support services. And she's also been a point person in helping establish our regional initiative for NISALA, which is the New York State Association of Women Administrators. So there's been a North Country chapter that's been reestablished. I urge Peru to all of your administrators to be part of it. You can get a chapter membership, and every one of your administrators can be part of that as well. So without further ado, I want to share with you our distinguished Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, Mrs. Amy Campbell. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate you giving me just a few minutes of your time to share with you a little bit about the school support services division. As the Assistant Superintendent for Educational Services at CVES, guiding the division is only one part of what I do. But it is an incredible division, not a lot of flash, but a ton of substance. Support and services. We exist to support our districts, our component districts, and to serve you in any way that we can. In the folder, you will find a list of all of our cosers. Peru is a strong supporter of school support services, participating in 16 of our cosers. Everything from arts and education, which helps your students to go to the babby farm, and to bring Jared Campbell here, as well as instructional technology. You have an incredible technology team here, and we just support a little bit in the background. The last couple of years, you've used our print, well, you've always been a strong supporter of our print shop, but our communications division, our communications department. Excited to see the story that you're telling about Peru. As Dr. Davy shared, I was here for a part of my career, and so I have a little bit of my heart here in Peru, and I love when I can see the things that you're doing on social media. Great storytelling. And then, you know, everything from transportation, supporting bus drivers, making sure they're trained and ready to be with your students, and just, we do a whole bunch. And it's all stated in the folder there. But mostly, what we try to do is bring the region together to provide those cooperative services at a discounted price, so that you can do things that you might otherwise be able to afford. But mostly, I thank you for the incredible leadership that the Peru district and your incredible administrative team and teachers provide to the region. In the groups that they've participated in, in the time that I've been at CVES, they lead the conversations, and they lead the discussion, and they are sharing the best practices that are happening here. So thank you for allowing them to be part of that regional narrative and conversation, and we look forward to serving you way into the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Storms or President Barry, does the Board have any final questions before we wrap up?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything that we are not taking advantage of, anything you should, on the coaster side?
I think that's always a conversation to be had about, is there something that we can provide in a cooperative environment that is more difficult for you to provide? I think you're taking advantage of the most important posters that we have. One of the things I didn't mention is our Model Schools poster, which is really new. Nick Damiani is a leader in that because of the work that you're doing here, and that all has to do with how you use technology for instruction. So as I look at today, because I sat with this today and went through, I wouldn't say there's anything that you need to have right this minute, but I'd be happy to have more conversations with Superintendent Storms about the things that, and what I love about talking with Scott is, he'll ask great questions, and we'll have good conversation, and he'll talk about the long-term planning, and where do we put it. And, you know, you can't give BOSI's aid if you're using grant money, and right now, most of our districts have quite a bit of grant money. So we're ready to have those conversations when that money starts to go away, and like, what can we do to be part of that. But right now, I think you're participating in key cosers. The ones that I would say everybody should be in, you're in.
Right, we're in a majority of those.
You're in, you're in, yes.
You are. And I'll also share that you're in many of our other cosers. And I know Mr. Bell, our Assistant Superintendent for Education for Management Services, I know has come over and met and worked with you as well. You know, Mrs. Friedman is our Director of Peru and Tech, Mr. Slattery. So our team is available to come over and share any information about the posters that you're not part of. I know Mr. Storms has been open to having us come over and meeting and finding more information, as well as your administrative team, for posters that we may be able to support your district in. Okay, so I think, you know, one of the hallmarks of CBS is that we've worked really hard to be customer service-oriented, to meet the needs of Peru and all of our components. So if there is an area that you feel you need support in, or you have questions about, we are happy to come over and have those conversations. And that's an exciting part of being at the BOSI's, because when needs are identified, and for those new, for those cosers, if there's a service that two districts can belong to, that's not currently active, with two districts from our component districts, we can activate that coaster. And many of them we have that aren't active right now are previously approved, and just waiting for those districts to sign up. So it's an advantage, especially with your coaster aid ratio of 74.9%, 75% back on the dollar, does support your state aid and your participation.
And we'll leave the update. I'll go through this and just let you know exactly which coaster you're part of, just so everyone knows. Take a look at this sheet, and be able to determine which ones were part of, and which ones were not. And I can add to that this way.
And just to make you aware, when you join a coaster, you have that full payment that first year. You get the 75%, close to 75% the second year you're in. So there's always an outlay of.
So the incentives ahead.
And I would say to you, I think one of the things that's really been very important in CVES is that we can have that conversation, like, what are some opportunities that, here's something we know that you're doing, or we hope you're doing, and if you are, can you tell us? And then we end up doing that. So like, our labor relation opportunity that we're working on this year, Mr. Copley is outstanding. I think that Kara and I couldn't say, you know, I think that it's, we use that on a regular basis, and that we're really getting good feedback there. And I also feel that we're looking at, you know, I can't say enough about the services that we're doing there, that that's really good stuff. And Eric is so, if I have a question that's above Eric and/or Julie, Eric is always very open to conversations, and conversation with him today. So at the end of the day, I think we're really in the right cosers. And I think that Kara and Amy both brought it up, that it is, it really depends on, you know, where you are, how you're financing the coaster for the particular year. And there are a lot of grant monies out there, so we need to just be really mindful. We have to have a leadership team in regards to, we need to really, you know, looking at the big picture, what happens when these things, when we start having to pull back. And that's when we'll have to, you know, I look through the list, and we're involved in many, many.
The school support services, the only posters you are not participating in are either what you're purchasing from Eric, so Substitute Coordination, which is, you get the same discount there. Community School Resources, which we do not have any schools in right now, so nobody's participating in that. Shared Athletic Trainer, which is a brand new coaster that we've been trying to get some grants to help offset the funds for. And Musical Instrument Repair, which I believe you have staff here that do some of that themselves. And then, actually, and Violable ESL Intender Teacher, we're trying to find you somebody. You want to be part of that, you just need to find a teacher. So that's it. That's why I'm saying, strong partnership with us. We're very appreciative of that.
And Amy, as our Assistant Superintendent, is very much focused on customer service, especially in school support, in all of our divisions. But think of each of these cosers as a mini-business. And if there's participation, and enrollment, and a high-quality service, the coaster will continue. If not, districts traditionally walk with their, they vote with their feet. If you don't feel that you're getting your money's worth, many times, districts will say, "Thank you," but not at this time.
I'm working with Joey Lafranca on the newsletter page, it went amazing, and his staff, the people that work with him, a lot of great compliments from the community on that. So I think that that's been a huge, huge hit as well. And then there's the piece that's playing out right now as well, that is showcasing our seniors. So we're actually doing that, and it was his idea, and it's been done at other schools. We're showcasing every senior throughout the school year, and we have a blast on social media, basically what their goals are, and where they are, and what they thought of Peru Central School, and all those kinds of things. And with their picture, as well as, and that was really, Joey brought it to us as a group, and said, "What do you think?" And we all got around it, and it's been really successful. I mean, I say it's been really successful, they've been working really hard to get it going, right? So it's exciting.
And, Mr. Storms, you've been very open to considering the possibilities, and see if it will meet the needs of your district, and support your communication, or support, you know, the different areas of focus. So thank you for that, and thank you for the Board and your support.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, Mr. Webanero, any closing comment you'd like to share? You're wearing both hats this evening.
No, I just say that this meeting feels very flattery, and some people might think, like, oh, CBS is coming in here, like, go on, I could polish what I'll say. In the board meeting, CBS is in exact terms of conversation. This is about partnership, this is about customer service, this is about delivering services that work with the best that possible, and for all of the districts. So it's just really interesting to see this as a whole, on both sides.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is electric buses. And so I just wanted to let, I think it's really important that every board meeting, every time we have another, some more information about electric buses, I share that with you, so that we can know that we're actively participating and engaging with this process. So Kara, Dave, and Jerem Mattel, David, myself, have been taking six workshops with NICE, and their parent company, EPA. And we're going with establishing a fleet electric station plan with them. They're working with us to establish that. And, you know, some of those things are there right now. We're also looking, opening in November is the New York State Bus Incentive Program, which is the one that some of you have shared as well. That's the one that offsets money. So like, if you pay for a bus, and you get to that point where you're purchasing an electric bus, that it covers the difference. That's one. And there's also the EPA Clean School rebate. That doesn't, ends in January, we're waiting for it to open. So that's in January. So some of those are the things that we're working on currently. I think what's really important, as we perform with electric buses, and mandates for electric buses, and I know that that tends to be a little bit of a controversial topic in the North Country. And I think as long as we're being mindful of, like, I think that, this is just my opinion, of course, but I think it will see some of those deadlines, and some of those hard dates may change. However, I don't ever think that it's going to just go away. So that being said, I think that it's mine, that we need to be mindful of, like, you know, purchasing the bus. So every year, we purchase a number of buses, three. And we need to be considering one of them being an electric bus as we move forward, and trying to get to that place where we can take a look at any incentive there is out there. And so it's been informative, the meetings that we've been going to, and we have the opportunity to ask questions. We're in a cohort of other schools in New York, from different places. And so, one down, five to go.
Well, and wasn't there, what was called the Electric Bus Roadmap, or the Roadmap, which was very encouraging, because it said possibly, possibly that it might be delayed from 2027 to 2029. But as the technology increased, with the electric buses, we probably would get to the point where the electric buses, which would be almost three times the amount of money of a regular bus now, a diesel bus now, might get to the point where that price factor is going to go down. So it was encouraging to read that roadmap, and it's on, it's on the website, on the New York State website, anybody can read it. But it was encouraging for some of the things that were.
And the other part about it too, I was in Saratoga with the superintendent of the conference, and we were talking about electric buses. I went to two different sessions of electric buses. And there definitely are skeptics across the state, thinking that it's just not going to happen. And I just think that it's so important that we're just, we're doing everything in our power to be knowledgeable about it, to make the, you know, make steps, because it would really not be a great place to be if we ignore it, you know, and put our heads in the sand, acting like it's not going to happen. And then, when the mandate comes out, and we're behind the curve. So this is the effort that I feel we need to do. And so, talking about the electric buses, sharing, as soon as we have more to share, we will, letting you know how things go with the grants that we're working towards. So finishing up some things with our pre-K grant, and when is we'll be working deep into these as well. So.
Is there any sort of metrics, or any sort of local savings that if we add handful of these buses, that we might see in a given year, if you apply it to what we do?
So I think it's interesting that you say that, because I believe, and I believe we're going to be touching upon that in these seminars, in this plan, that we're, in what it looks like in regards to savings and things like that. I think that that's going to be part of it. I think that it's so new that there isn't really, because again, you talk to different groups, right? You talk to NICE, they're like, well, we are enough. You talk to different groups of people, and people are a little, I just feel like, in our plan that we're creating, to the electrification plan, that I will be, I think that we should, I don't want to quote this, but I would say to you, by March, we're going to be closer to having some level of plan that we can talk to people about. So March, April, I feel like in there, we'll be talking about.
Because that roadmap did indicate that there would be some savings, but of course they don't know the figures.
Because, right, I mean, it's thousands less parts, there's no oil changes, allegedly there's no, so, and I'm not a proponent of it necessarily, or an opop, it's just that I think that would really help us to know, you know, when we get to the point of, like, okay, this is when we're going to buy one electric bus with our two diesel buses. Well, that one, they're like, what route is that going to be on, and what might that look like?
And it was interesting talking to superintendents that are, that have them, and they've already purchased them and have an electric bus. And they're all working through those exact questions, of what route to put it on. No one has a fleet, right? Everyone's got one, one bus. I was talking to one superintendent from Portland, and it's like, gosh, he's like, if you can get on that bus, he's the finest bus you've ever had on your trip. I'm like, really? It was just interesting. I was like, what about winter, what about, he was like, well, I'll let you know.
What happens to the batteries when you go down? About 10 years.
10 years, that's good.
I did mention retired buses and that.
Oh, yes. That was not really concerning.
And I think that that's all part of this plan, too, in regards to. And I think that that's, that's all part of this, this plan too, in regards to, you know, when you start talking about the internal work of your buses and, and the plans that you currently have, how does that? And those are questions I have, like, what is that, how does that change? How, what does that look like in the new, in the new plan? So those are all things I hope to bring back to you, you know?
Is one, are one of those rebates or money that you're talking about, are they for infrastructure?
So one, the, um.
Of charging?
I believe that the, that the EPA Clean Schools Rebate has that potential to be able to do that as well. And I think, you know, there's a lot of unanswered questions in the process, right? Everything from, it's, it's ideal when a school district is in the middle of a building project, and their focus on their building project was the bus garage. So that's not where we are right now, so like, that, those are all questions that we have, and that we want to try to address as well. So, but I just wanted to start making that as part of our regular update to you where we are, and as soon as I have more to hand you, I will. And so I just wanted to let you know, it's not one of these, I forgot about a share, but I'm gonna add it here too, is that I mentioned it to the board in the update, but we will have a surplus auction, um, that's next day. Here, um, it'll be an in-person as well as a virtual, um, event, and there are gonna be some things like buses and furniture and those types of things. We're gonna be, we'll be sending, Matt will be playing something out, I know Faye will be putting something online. And it will also, um, right now, because we're working with Ridge Street Auction, Ridge Street Auction already has, um, some stuff up about it already. So we'll be sharing that out, just to get that up. And then next, um, things that I need to talk to you about is the strategic plan. So, um, as you know, in the summer, we worked on the strategic plan, and, um, we were able to update our strategic plan, which is kind of a really good thing, makes you feel pretty good about the fact that we're in that place right now. So, um, why we did this work, um, and it really comes down to that piece, and I think that the board members that were here recognize that it was one of those things that, um, even when I first started in this position, we had a strategic plan that we had, had, um, just finished in our second year, but due to COVID and where we were with COVID, we ended up, um, not having all the data points that we needed to really address that, and the individual that we worked with on our strategic plan had retired, and that he stopped his business in doing the strategic plan. So, you know, it's our commitment, it continues for improvement, and that's what we really needed to do. And one of the things that, um, we needed to address were district goals and where we were with district goals. And a year ago, um, we talked about district goals, as you probably don't remember. And, um, one of the, you know, one of the concerns that was brought up, like, um, members of our, our teaching community and the overall group community was the involvement component, having the stakeholders all involved. So this process involved all of our stakeholders. So, um, you know, we, we set forth, what we set out to do involved members of our school community. We allowed the stakeholders to engage, um, teams, we facilitated action plans, learned this under work that we did. We did a lot of thought exchanges, that was something that we also, we participated in. Um, we, we worked with, um, our, our facilitator, um, Kevin McGowan. So Kevin is the, was the New York State Superintendent of the Year. He actually came and worked with us on this particular process. And we looked at innovative ways to allocate resources and have conversations and teams. And so that's really what our intention was, is to set up what we did. And then what, so the steps that we did is we had, um, community feedback, we gathered it, um, we drafted mission and vision statements, we updated those. Um, community team assembled, um, we had a community team, and then we had action plan development, and then we revised. Um, we made lots of conversations around revising words and those types of things that we typically do in a strategic plan. Um, we really took a look at our current mission and vision, and you see those old ones are up after tonight. I hope we can move forward, so we'll build some new, new, um, signage around the district in regards to our mission and vision. Um, one of the things I think is so critical is that, um, again, a, a plan like this is not just something that sits on the table. It's something that we, we can all understand what our goals are. So our mission that we agreed upon when we prepared our students to be fulfilled and empowered individuals and contributors to their community by providing, engaging, and challenging and supporting learning environment. So that was our mission and our vision. Um, we're the heart of a learning community that supports all members in growth, learning, and achievement through a wide variety of experiences, so those are the mission and vision of our district at this time. Core values, so I won't read all of these to you, but I think what's really important is we, we established core values. So in this process, we talked about everything from fostering, um, belonging in our school, to set high standards for work, treat, treat others how we like to be treated, um, honor the dignity of each individual student, take care of ourselves and each other, build trust and demonstrate, I mean, so those are some of the, the core values that really, that are thought throughout our whole strategic plan. Priority areas, so we were able to bring our strategic plan down to priority areas. Priority areas, um, student experience, we wanna talk about our student experience here at Peru. And as we all, I think, you know, the difference between our last strategic plan and this strategic plan is a bright deal of conversation across the country, right, on, um, mental health and wellness. So that's, that's also an area at operations. So our goal there, when we worked in student experience, we provide development, meaningful experience, coursework, and school experiences, and out-of-school experiences for all students. So we really wanna look at that ability of what we do here and what we can do for students outside of the district. Um, mental health, we'll provide an environment that supports the mental health and wellness of the school, community members, and rest, specific needs related to belonging, equality, and safety for all. And then operations, the goal was to build a culture of respect, responsibility, and safety, or collective responsibilities taken for how we regard our systems and spaces. So I think that that's the other, one of the major pieces. Those are our three priority areas. And then each one of our priority areas, we looked at action steps. Now, if you have a copy of, of our whole roadmap, this is just a snippet of, of what's in there. And so we, we talked about our, um, the area, the priority area, and then the district goal, and you'll see that in your plan. And then we talked about action steps that we need to do. And so those were things that we worked as, as administrative team, and, um, you'll see more of that. There are copies of that in the community as well, so you can take a look at that as well. So, um, we also had, um, mental health and wellness, we also showed action steps in that particular one, this is a snippet of that. Same thing, um, with operations and things that we need to do, and it was, they're really, um, I would say, very good conversations as groups of people, and we were in different, with different groups all the entire times. We're, this was, this was a real collective, um, group of people that were working on that. And then we, what is next? Where do we go from here with that? So after tonight, and the board, if, you know, the board accepts this process, then what we're going to do is we have a timeframe. So, um, August and November, um, we were working on our blueprint, I did a presentation for you tonight, and then we're gonna quarterly, um, meetings, updates on our blueprint. So instead of board, um, administrators coming forward, just, now, that doesn't mean most of it, but presentation that's not based on our strategic plan, because I think our administrators have done an outstanding job presenting different things. But we will be coming forward, quarterly, talking to the Board of Education, and, and reporting back to the board on those, um, on where we are with our action plans, and where, where each building is, and, um, those types of things. Um, February, um, the blueprint, we'll, we'll make recommendations. And then June, we'll have a final report, and then we'll, we'll be talking about in July, any updates that we need to be making to the plan, to update things that, that we were able to complete over the school year, and then things that we would, um, maybe add to as well. I think that those are gonna be, you know, new actions that we, you know, new, new areas within our action plan that we need to address, and things that we may need to circle back and, 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 so those are the things that we need, that we did in our strategic plan. And we had a lot of people, um, we had a lot of people across the district, so we won't read everyone's name. Those are the people across the district, including parents, administrators, board members, that participated in our process. So we look forward to our next steps, which is bringing information back to the community and to the board. Um, does anybody have any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Professional Development Day, sorry. So we had a, we had a really good Professional Development Day on October 6th, and, um, so we did a variety of different things.
We had such a stuff.
So you guys had that, and we had a lot of different things offered for our staff. And, um, some of those things will carry through to our November Day, and be, some of it will be repeated. Um, we're already talking about some activities that will be, there are some different professional development opportunities we're gonna be offering for our staff. And, um, so again, you did see the October 6th, does anyone have any questions for me about the Professional, Professional Development Days? Or any of that, I don't know. All right?
Thank you very much.
Next.
Crew Association of Teachers.
Uh, good evening, uh, thank you for having me again. I, I don't wanna take a long time, I wanted to kinda, uh, comment a little bit about some, uh, Professional Development Day. I saw Mr. Storms was speaking about that. Um, just share some feedback that I got from some of the teachers a little bit. Mostly not about some things that were offered, but just the fact that the Board, the Board of Education, Mr. Storms, supported bringing back the half-days, it seems like it's been forever since we had these kind of, uh, opportunities for Professional Development. I know some of our, some of our staff who were part of the hundred hours of C T L E, I mean, those, it's much appreciated because they, um, you know, they're getting those hours, you know, at school, so. So again, I wanna, and thank you for your support in that, hopefully, um, you know, they'll be beneficial throughout, throughout the rest of the year, and we can continue moving forward. I also wanted to, I know one person is here, but, um, but on behalf of P A T, I wanted to welcome Kyra Burnside and Mitch Senical. I know you're, you've been approved, and you're entering a new role, so.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
I know Mitch Senical's a new, new hire starting, uh, next week, and we're welcoming him. I heard some very good things about him, um, and also knowing him from the past, competing against him. Coaching staff here, so. Other than that, uh, you know, the beginning of the year always brings new challenges and, um, new excitement, and I think that's, um, where we are right now. I think teachers are very, teachers and staff are very excited about some of the things that are going on. And, you know, and with, as with all the challenges that we always face, we've had some really good conversations with Mr. Storms and the administrators in navigating those challenges, and then some of the newer state mandates that have, that have come out, so we'll continue to work, work, and, you know, face those as head up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Okay. The administration.
So this report tonight is, um, a follow-up to the board's request, um, back in July to talk about booster clubs. And so Amy and I are gonna talk to you a little bit about this together, so. So after meeting with the Board of Educat, after the board's request in July, um, about booster clubs, I reached out to Amy, and Amy was at the job for half a second, and I'm like, hey, I got a great job for you. And she did a great, she worked really hard on trying to get all this information from all the different groups. And, um, I have other things we'll be adding into this, so. Bear with me. All right, um, so Amy, you wanna talk a little bit about where we are with the, um?
Yes, I, I put a little overview here of why sports booster clubs, because I think it's important we know why we have them and what they're used for. Um, so obviously, the most obvious answer is financial support. Uh, the booster clubs often play a crucial role in funding sport programs at school through fundraising. All our teams that have them here do different types of fundraising to raise the money that's in their account currently. Um, so it helps cover, like, extra costs, is like equipment, um, travel costs if the team's going away, uh, they do it overnight. Um, facility maintenance, if there's anything we need for our fans that we can purchase to our school budget. Um, so different things like that. And overall, it enhances the quality of a program, and I, I firmly believe in this paragraph, I'm not gonna read it word for word, but I truly believe the booster club enhances your overall sports experience, um, especially here at Peru. Because when we get to, uh, one of the reports that I, I have, one of the things on there is, everybody uses their booster club to do our senior nights and supply the posters that are out there for our seniors, and decorate, or buy gifts for our seniors, so that's a big part of it. Because if you ask a football coach who has twelve seniors Friday night to go buy gifts for all of them, he's probably not going to provide that. So, uh, the overall quality of our sports experience here. All right, so who has them? So softball, baseball, um, wrestling, boys soccer, girls soccer, cheerleading, girls basketball, boys basketball, football, volleyball, then there's boys hockey, but it's shared with Sarah, girls hockey, shared with Beakman Town, and golf.
I think one of the interesting pieces about this too is that, um, when we, we look back to board policy on this particular one, and this is going to be a, a standing, um, report that moves you yearly with, with the board, so the board knows where we are with our boosters. I think that that's really gonna be an important aspect, and this is something that since I've been here and have not done it, I don't know, it was really timed very often before that, so I think that'll be a helpful thing, just to get an idea.
So who does not have them currently? Unified basketball, girls flag football, uh, it's new, it'll be our second year, it just got approved as a C V A C sport, so it's something they can look at. Bowling, tennis, gymnastics has happened in the past, but they let it go. And then cross-country, I kinda grew track as, as one big thing here, um, because it, it seems like the same coach is usually coaching it. Um, but they're working on starting one. I know cross-country's really getting up and starting to raise some funds and opening an account for a booster club, so that's where we're at.
Girls flag football was also supported by one of the teams.
It was supported by the NFL, the Giants.
Right.
Yeah, and I think that was only for the one year.
One year.
Yeah, if you win, apparently there's incentive from them, that's what I've heard. Yes.
What about lacrosse and swimming?
Swimming does not. Lacrosse does, but it's on here, lacrosse is on this one, but I, I think I just forgot. So, here's all the sports that I was able to get information from, some of them I was not, so you're gonna see it linked. On my one previous slide, I said that hockey, boys hockey didn't provide information, but they actually did. My mistake, I didn't believe it. So, an overview, so what I did with Scott is ask, what do you want me to find out? So we found out who the contact person was for each booster club that we have, okay? We did an ending balance of six thirty twenty-two, a beginning balance of seven one twenty-three, and then we kinda listed out some significant purchases that booster clubs have made. So I know the girls soccer booster club the best, so I'm gonna use that as an example right now, okay? So some of the big purchases that are, that are made that, in that time period, that year, uh, we pay for our varsity JV summer league that our girls participate in, and that's held at Sweeney Plasberg. And we also pay for the modified soccer league, so any kids that are entering the modified level can participate in that league. That's held at Beakman Town, okay? Uh, we do a senior banquet at the end of the senior, we're, season where we recognize our seniors. We provide them with gifts, we pay for their family and their meal. Um, and then, uh, we did like, uh, team shirts for our program. So those were some big purchases that we made with the, with the soccer booster club. So those were some big purchases that we made with the soccer booster club, for example. If you go to lacrosse, okay? Lacrosse is currently funded strictly through the booster club, because it's just starting. So that's a little bit different. And then obviously, the hockey booster clubs are the different, because they're shared with another school as well.
Can you talk to us a little bit about when you were having those conversations with the contacts on various booster clubs? Give me an example of some other things that they talked about purchasing that maybe we don't purchase.
Okay. So some things that we purchased, like football, they do huddle. So that's like a, kind of like a camera system, video system that they use to break down game footage, play-by-play on their opponent. Some other things they would use, like going to a tournament. Volleyball, they do like a tournament at Saramac. They pay the fees out of their booster club. Some people do that if you want to do something extra that the school doesn't cover directly, they'll use it there. Boys, what was it? I'll look here. Equipment, I have to say, equipment is a big purchase out of the booster clubs. If we look at our school budget here, it's not significant for sports. And the cost of equipment is very expensive. For example, a baseball softball bat costs about a good bat, okay? If we want our teams to compete, you're looking anywhere $200 to $400 per bat. So if you want to keep that stuff constantly upgraded, you know, the school budget would take a huge hit if you had to do that. So for the softball program, we use our funds. And if you look, I'll use the softball one as an example too, because I know a lot about that. It has a significant amount of money in it right now. But what we have done is we've saved money, because we would like to put up a retractable fence on the field. Baseball has one on their field, but softball would like one for the softball season. And it is a significant purchase. So we have saved money. We also, with the softball booster club, have purchased like different equipment to drive the softball field with. That was a very high purchase price. So those are just a couple of different examples.
So I think one of the things that was interesting is, in addition to Amy reaching out to people, I did a lot of reaching out as well, talking to superintendents in regards to what does it look like in other schools? Because I anticipate the Board's going to have questions in regards to what other schools do. And it's interesting, because when you talk to them, they'll tell you that they may have one booster club, but it's really a place that they house all the money in. One booster club may house it. However, that doesn't mean that it's still divided amongst the various teams and it's still run by coaches. So I think coaches and members of that team. Others have a little bit, different schools are a little bit different. They have a hybrid of a committee that makes the decision. And I'll say to you, I think that that takes it to a place where you are taking it away from coaches, who are people that are actually in the midst of making those decisions on a regular basis. So after talking to all superintendents in the region, in comparable schools, I would say to you, the system that we currently have is a very successful system. The one thing other schools don't have, most other schools don't have, when I had that conversation with superintendents, is varsity club. So we have varsity club. And I think that it goes a lot, goes back to our strategic plan too, about that community building component, where our students are required. If members, athletes are part of varsity club and they're participating in the event, the concessions, if you will, and those types of things, then those teams can reach out if there's something that they need that isn't covered by boosters. So that's kind of like a booster club in itself, right? And if we can, which would be a whole district, or all sports, athletics, you know, that covers all of them. So I think that that's a real plus. And I also think that, you know, I commend our varsity club advisors for the work that they're doing in regards to recruitment. Like they're out there, they're calling people in. And I'm happy to say that they're, can you talk about some of the?
Yeah, I think something that's really important to note with the varsity club situation right now is something I wanted to do when I came into this position was how can we build the sports experience? So what I came up with, when I worked with the varsity club advisors to do this, is each coach that has a varsity level game here, under the lights, okay? They had to pick three games that they thought they would have the most like crowd support at, okay? So we had volleyball, picked three nights, gymnastics, because they're hosted here, girls soccer, boys soccer, and then football, had three home games. So that's what we based the three off of, okay? So then in turn, I flipped it on the coaches during my coaches meeting and said, we need your support, because we need our athletes involved in varsity club. Because if you ever need something from them, they need to be involved to ask for it. And varsity club does give scholarships to seniors, but they will not do it unless they're active members in it. So this gets everybody involved. So our teams had to, on an off night, sign up to work the concession stand. And I can proudly say that every team has done it. Even our swim team had worked it a night. Our cheerleaders have worked it. So even the teams that are off campus, some of them have came and worked. Because now, because they did that, this money that's being raised through the concession stand, we're able to give back to them if they need something.
And I think one of the most important parts about the, I'm sorry. One of the most important aspects of it is to look at it from that perspective, that involvement piece. And I think that, you know, transparent reporting is going to be really important. We don't have governance over booster clubs as a school district. However, it's important for us to know what good things booster clubs are doing for the district and for athletics. And so I feel like this is important, this particular task is an important task that we do on a regular basis, on an annual basis, because it hasn't been done. And when we were talking to booster clubs that may not necessarily be here on campus, especially when we're talking about merged schools, they are merged sports. People were very apprehensive. They're like, what are you doing? Why are you having this conversation right now? Because it's important to know, when I talk to the other superintendents, any merged, even if they say that they're a booster together, have one booster club, if they're a merged sport, they look at that differently. So that's outside of it. So I think that's just really important to take those things into consideration. And I think, you know, if you see any that are missing, that is something we will absolutely work on, and Amy and I will work on, trying to better inform people of it and sharing the policy with everybody. And not making this a scare. It shouldn't be a scary tactic. It should be just an opportunity for the Board of Education to recognize where the booster clubs are. Do you have any questions for us?
Yeah, I've got two. So the fundraising piece is fine, though it does feel a little bit like a wobbles. You know, in terms of like who's doing what, when, and for how. So I've noticed a few times that we've gotten information on it where, you know, our coaches or people are making decisions to go and get, whether it's popcorn or candy bars or whatever, that the profit margins are less than 50% on them. And I don't know, you had mentioned, we really don't have any control over this, but I don't know if there's a way to kind of influence or maybe help folks seek out opportunities that are going to be a little bit more lucrative or?
I think that's a great suggestion. And I think that that's an opportunity that we can take that. I think that right now, everyone's on alert. Everyone's really worried, because this has never been done before. So everyone's like, why do they want to know this information? So they're very worried about what's going to happen. And I think that, I think we absolutely can work with them to talk about the different things that they're fundraising and try to work collaboratively with them. And we realize they all fundraise, but are there ways that we can, you know, help them?
Find ones that are more profitable.
Absolutely.
Less calories.
Stay tuned on fundraising, because that's coming up in another month.
Yeah, $20 on a bag of popcorn, you expect $8 for the postage and stuff. We need to rethink those. If we can have a list of those, I think that would be a suggestion.
And I think we could come up with some things that 20 years ago, they did as a varsity club. I couldn't remember, two falls in a row. Football, I don't remember, it was football and someone else, maybe soccer. Both girls and boys teams had the public sign up for certain Saturdays or Sundays to come to their home in groups. So maybe you got six football players going to this house and 20 going to this house for fall cleanup. They raped, they cleaned, they pruned, they did all these things for people, and it was a donation. And we established like a big property, not $10 for two acres, but, you know, gave it a, what it did was not only just getting money for money's sake, but you're doing a community service. And if we could get the parents who are involved in booster club, as well as the coaches and the kids, and combine those and come up with a brainstorming sessions, I think that's another way of hitting the community in a positive way. And they won't think, well, how much money does football have? And poor cross-country has nothing. You know, that kind of thing. That's not really true in regard to booster club.
I think one of the things that's really important, I reached out to Jackie, knowing that this would probably be part of our conversation, is to talk a little bit more about fundraising in general. And so we're going to have more conversations about that.
Right.
And I think that forward that conversation and bring that back to the Board. So that's coming up.
And look at timelines, you know? It's like all the ball sports bombard you, it's all there. Look at timelines.
Well, it's interesting you say that, because one of the things that Jackie questioned me on was the fundraising calendar.
Yeah.
And I'm like, Jackie, I don't know fundraising. And she's like, okay, well, we need to have a conversation about that. So I think that those are some of the things that we need to either revisit or have conversations on. I think that those are important.
So you had made a note up there of some of the summer leagues, which happened in a variety of different sports. I'm getting some feedback from parents anyway, that they feel like their kids have to participate in order to be selected for these varsity JV teams. The kids are very critical. And so I don't know if there are lines to draw there or policies that need to be looked at. But that precedent is one that goes against what schools courts are supposed to be, which is, you know, kind of everybody's chance, at least at some level, until you get up to the varsity level. But that's one where it seems to be, and maybe it's not a question and answer now, but just something to think about for how that's affecting kids who can't attend first.
Sure. Any other questions?
Do you want to go ahead?
I have a few.
So has anybody looked into grants, like for these retracting fences and things that is a correct, that they could maybe afford to help pay for some of the costs?
So I would say to you, when it comes to grants, as everyone knows, we started this year with a full-time grant person. And, you know, I'm going to, I'll say to you right now, primarily, primarily, the focus has been on COVID grants. That's where we've spent a great deal of time. And then school started, and she's finishing up on working preschool grants. And we were excited to her just yesterday. Let's go, because we got to get that, we really need to work on the electrification of buses grant. But just so you know, one of the things that she's doing on a regular basis is looking into different grant opportunities. So of course, if there are things, and I appreciate it when Steve, you know, I'll say to you, Steve shared one, and we ended up getting those equipment grants. We were able to get equipment for cafeteria. It was one of them, we're working for Julie and Wendy Ann, and we were able to get that. So if, I'll say to you, she's definitely scouring for grants all the time. In addition, we're trying to do these big ones that we're working on. So I would say, if there are out there, we'll keep looking and try to, you know, if anyone knows of them, we'll look.
I do want to thank you too for incorporating all the different teams when they go out. That's very nice, having a concession stand open for a home game as well. Another thing, as I'm looking at this, I kind of have to chuckle at myself. The different sports are like team gear, team gear, you know, doing this, and then you have a coach bus. And I'm just kind of like, just, which teams are prioritizing on gear and, you know, things like that, but then, you know, somebody says a coach bus. Which kind of leads me to, I brought up in July, that, you know, the football team having a coach bus to go to their final game, and then the volleyball team getting a school bus. And it's just kind of like, why, and granted, I get the fact that they save for the coach bus, but how does that make the volleyball players feel when they get a school bus, but then the day before, you know, the football team left on a coach bus? And girl, we have a great town supervisor who's been raising money for these teams and now has done this, so that's, hopefully that will continue. That's another thing. And then another thing, which I know is going on right now, because I had somebody approach me that wants to play for hockey, they have to return $1,000. That's a lot of money. And I'll tell you right now, I know a couple of kids on that team that the parents don't have $1,000. And I referred one of the children to the organization that I belong to, that he also belongs to, to ask for donations, you know, to help support him. I did not make that means I'm here tonight, but I'm hoping. If they did donate, I put a good word in for them. If I just, we'd be mindful of these children that belong to Peru that the parents can't afford $1,000.
And even though that, we recognize that's difficult on it, and I had that same, I knew that would probably be a conversation as well tonight. Talk to other superintendents about it. And it does depend on, you know, where you are in regards to how much we're funding certain things. You know, and when we talk about hockey, for example, we don't fund, we don't fund it completely. So that's, so when you're talking about fundraising, they're fundraising to?
To offset.
To offset what the district doesn't. So I think those are just conversations, you know? We did raise that a year ago, was it? A year ago? I don't remember that, I mean, it was a year ago. So I think those are just, those are all good conversations to have. And I get it. I think that those are, you know, when you talk about different sports, and when you talk, like I was having conversations with coaches, when they said, yeah, you know, football, for example, if someone doesn't have the bleeds that they need, or and they're out getting those kind of things, it's just a little bit more difficult when you're talking about hockey, because they're trying to offset trying to pay their, the portion that we have to pay. I get where you're coming from. There's no question, we do want, we don't want people to look, they're not able to purchase.
Just another quick question, because when I was at Peru, I was a swimmer. Of course, it's possible to say that, and we always swam at. But last year, we joined with Asable, correct? So did we, did we then, because we joined with them, did we pay for part of the pool usage then?
So every school does, they're a little bit different. Every school has, it depends on, it depends on the use. So can you talk a little bit about what we're doing this year?
That was my first question. I will gladly report to you that Asable has been generous to donate their pool to us this year. They're not even charging Peru to use their facilities for our swim team. And they are also so generous to go as far as, they have a Peru Night Hop banner that they purchased for our school, and they have it hanging in their gym, or their pool, excuse me, and they didn't even?
They didn't ask for money last year, right?
No.
So I would say to you, I think that it's all about those partnerships that we, you know, we're trying to build. And I work with superintendents on a regular basis on that. So I'll give you an example to involve athletics, but when Dr. Davy was here talking about C D Tech, and we had some students at the beginning of the school year that didn't get their seats that they, what they wanted, and their second choice they didn't get, and their choice was too far away from really what they wanted to do. Matt came to me concerned, and it wasn't long, and the partnership between Matt and Asable, Mike called me, and we ended up making an arrangement where we take the, they pick our kids up and take them to Mineville for a particular program, and we pick them up. So those kind of partnerships, I think the more we can do that with other schools and create those collaborative places, you know, there. I, when we were doing track in the spring, we had to borrow a map from, this map from them, and we didn't have the map back on time. And I'm calling Mike, like, Mike, what do we need to do? I can, I can come over, you and I can bring it back. Saying, don't worry about it, my coach is a little upset about it, but we're okay. You know, so it's those partnerships, and I think the more often that we can give a little and they can give a little, that we're going to make better on all those types of partnerships, so.
And some of the merged teams that we? And some of the merged teams that we, we support, we don't ask the district for things, you know. We just support.
And that was Luch Ross, right, last year that we did here, we did alongside.
Yep.
Yeah.
Is it the old one we did?
Yeah, the Booster Club had done all the other.
It does previous, it's done previous ones with soccer, as we'll see.
Yeah, we have a, so right now this fall, we allow Osable to merge with us for gymnastics. So they send two girls here. Let me think about swimming. Serenac merges with our Peru girls for our swim. And then I think that's it for the fall mergers. In the winter coming up, it might be on the thing tonight, boy swimming with Osable.
Yep.
And then the spring, I'm not sure if we have any, haven't gotten that, that far yet.
It's a little ways out.
It is the proms, it is the modified Le Prost, so we can try to build Le Prost in this area.
And do we bill the Serenac swimmers or no, because we don't pay for that?
They provide their own transportation.
And that's, it's been that way for a while. So I remember the merged teams that, you know, if you were the school that did the merged team, your name was on it. The kids came in and we took care of them. And it's been kind of cooperative agreement with all the different schools.
Hey, two questions in a column. So one, you mentioned that a lot of this is a question of makes sense for sports. I would be really interested to understand across each of these boosters, what percentage of their outflow every year is going to equipment versus discretionary, or coach buses versus bats?
Yeah.
Right? I'd be really interested to see that. Similarly, you mentioned we're not funding hockey. So I'd love to understand from the school budget perspective, across all these different sports, what percentage of actual deeds come from the school budget versus having to depend on booster reimbursement from the forums? Because third, this is my comment, and it goes back to level two, it's crazy that although, you know, the idea of a consolidated booster, sure, you still have to decide how much to just distribute the monies after and there's going to be competition amongst the coaches and teams of how to distribute that money. What a consolidated booster does is eliminates the competition on the collection of that income, right? So how many, how many teams can we have to do fall cleanup? Really one group can sign up for that, right? Whoever gets there first gets to claim, this is our way of earning.
But.
We see this with the gold card today in Peru. The gold card, $50 or $25, whatever it is for those cards, right? Like, that's got to be a decent little chunk of income that that booster club's giving. Every other team can then go out and also sell gold cards. So we have competition amongst those booster clubs of who can get the best, most effective, most profitable fundraiser out there versus saying, you all go out and get as much as you possibly can. You're going to put it all in this big coffer and then you should be there amongst the teams based on the size, need and just whatever else it is. Equity is a big focus of our school, of every single community here on board, it's our responsibility. And to let each team compete and fund for themselves, like that doesn't feel like any manifester or certainly whatever we do in this space.
That's why it's a timeline, a timeline and we look at, you know, the profit, you know, profit, with making a better profit than the $20 bag spot.
I don't think we want to punish those entrepreneurial groups though. And, you know, I think one of the things that both of you are getting at is equity and parity. But I'm going to straight up tell you that. I don't think there is equity or parity.
Parity and equity are separate things.
What's that?
Parity and equity are separate things.
That's why I'm saying them differently. I'm saying them in the same sentence. They are good things. We're not able to provide that from football, swimming or hockey to cross-country or, you know, like, I have been on the losing end of every sport in my life. There are far many sports that are better funded than the ones I've chosen. And I'm going to sit here and say that there's no way that we should be striving for that. I think each sport has to be made to the best of each sport. Whether that is competitively, coaching wise, equipment, fundraising.
Number of participants.
Participants, whatever that ends up being, each sport needs to be managed for each sport. You know, it's, I, I do think we need to be, you know, keep our eyes on things like coach buses and, you know, whatever. And if a booster club wants to fund a coach bus versus another booster club that doesn't and just wants a regular bus,
That's their choice.
That's their choice. But I don't know that we should be striving for making sure our cross-country team and our football team are somehow equal. Because they're really
All five are not the same team.
Well, I'm not going to, we're going to, we're going to advance, I'm just saying something.
We can let each team still manage for themselves, right? But we, right now, there is no other team in Peru that can go out and sell gold cards.
Nope.
That is, that is not equity, that is not giving, they don't have the choice. There is no better choice ahead of those other teams. They don't have the ability to go out for that same potential of that industry. If we said, every community member in Peru could buy a gold card and it goes to Peru sports, right? You would get more, you would get more people across the entire community buying those cards. There would be more money going into the total conference. It's not pulling money away from football that they give it to another team. They're saying, as a community, let's put all money we have to these sports. There is still individual management across those teams and needs. And I'm not saying we get everyone to give around a hundred dollars and just spread it really heavily. Of course, there's individual needs amongst sports, but the situation we have right now is broke. It is not equitable.
The earning of the funds is not always in the fall. I mean, I know hockey has golf tournaments in the summer. They do fundraising year round because hockey, I happen to know, my grandson was involved, is probably, I don't know the real numbers, but the highest cost ice time is unbelievably high. They got practice every night and they pay for all kinds of things. So they realize, number one, they have to fundraise not just fall. They're not even a fall sport. They fundraise for different major fundraisers and little ones, basket ones. Also, every hockey family knows when they sign up that the booster club will pay in full for their costs, in full, if they participate equally. You'll get 200 bucks if you participate in sending tickets this, you'll get this, whatever it may be. I don't know the numbers. But I know that many of the boys have been covered in full, they did not pay that money. Others chose not to fundraise at all. The kids didn't do anything or the parents didn't do anything. Therefore, yes, they get the bill.
So I think
So there's different scenarios for every sport and no sport can be the same.
So therefore, if we get a timeline, you know, working on a timeline and working on where some of the profits are, you know, if you take a look at selling the candies and the foods and so on, gold cards and so on, and show teams the different levels of profits, that maybe we can expand on what kinds of things happen that we can gain more profits for the teams. But, you know, like, there's an explanation.
Could be for groups too. It doesn't have to be just for sports.
No, no, I mean, look at variety and drama music. We also have some things going on with them. Every, every time we have a concert or something, we have an area for donations.
I think that, like I said, when we go back to this next one, I'll be able to, kind of go in a different direction with it, but you'll see, you'll see its connection. So I think that that's just a good place to also.
Can I just make a comment on, I think you must understand, we do fund partially hockey. You said not.
No, yes, I said not completely.
Not completely, but we do fund a portion of it. I just wanted to make sure that that was.
So then when we get to budget season, we get to a place where, you know, that breakdown is a, is a good piece that we can add to a better fund.
But, you know, good points are made, you know, because somebody happens to know a little bit more about that. If a family chooses not to do fundraising, then they pay. If they choose to do fundraising, then they get, you know.
And it's not buying tickets.
No.
Go out and sell tickets, go to the car wash, help at the golf course, just to doing what they have to do.
We have to continue on a little bit with that, but thank you, you know, and raise some questions and so on. And we have to remember that we don't have governance of this. Okay, but maybe just looking at that timeline and the, you know, the profit margins on some of these things would be better for. Maybe coaches don't know about some of the profit margins.
I do like Eddie's point though, if they're buying expectantly, we need to look at, what are we buying or what aren't we providing? So that we have an idea of going forward.
I think the hard part about that too is like, again, it's a budgetary issue, right? So at the end of today, when you look at the budget, it's a considerably small budget for athletics and
You've got salaries.
You're not going to buy a fence. You're not buying a fence and you're certainly, like, the other year that they, you know, like the, some of the warm-up stuff, we're not buying that. That's not, those things aren't going to come out of, out of the, they're just, it wouldn't be.
They don't have like bags, helmets, like they're just so logic. I could.
But I think you, I think that it's a, it's a good first step if you can bring more information back. And if there's something after tonight's meeting you think of, feel free to reach out and I will bring more back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the Senate agenda, 13 A through G. I have a motion, motion Mrs. Mitchell, second, this is Glasgow Davies. One thing I do want to mention on G, I just attended the webinar for leadership, board leadership, and they did state that we should reaffirm, even though our code of ethics is in our policy, that we should reaffirm it every year. So next year, we'll make sure we put it in the July reorganization room. So I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion carried. We look at 14, there's a revision, as I said in the addenda, 14 A through H. Motion?
Motion.
Motion Mr. Peters, second, Mrs. Graves. Any questions? All in favor? Anyone opposed, motion carried. And 15, A through K, with the exception of C, C is removed. We have a motion, motion Mr. Robinaro, second, Mrs. Mitchell. Any discussion questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, can anybody, no one was opposed. And then 16, 16 A.
16 A.
A.
Back up to show you something on the TV.
Yeah. This is that little plot of land out there.
So Mrs. Barry, would you mind sharing your conversation that you had and?
Mr. Barber came to me, who was counsel in Peru. Mr. Barber came to me, because I've known him for many, many years because of having his, his children and so on. And his term is finished, his term is finished in December and he said, this one thing, I'd like to get cleaned up and taken care of. So many, many years ago, if you take a look at the little maps and so on, many years ago, the, what School Street was first paved, it was supposed to go kind of curb in, but it didn't happen because whoever was the supervisor at the time and the road supervisor and the supervisor of the town said, we're not going to try to plow and do around curbs, we're going to go straight. So what happened is that little yellow piece belongs to the school. And if you look over at Ramon Wetz's house, there's a lot of trees out there. That's a little piece that belongs to the school. That and a little part of, I think it's readings, he's paved a little bit where he has parking. That little piece belongs to the school. All that orange belongs to the town. They've got green, now they've got green.
Yeah, so I want to talk about the green.
Yeah, because now the green is coming into something totally different.
So it's interesting that you bring this up because Bonnie had shared that information with me and I reached out to Jackie about what
Let me go back, Mr. Barber said, the town is willing to, what's that, transfer, what do you call it, a transfer?
Quick plane.
Quick, quick plane, that's right, thank you. Quick plane lands to these two people because they, they have no use for it, nothing. But when we talk to our legal advice, we, we can have some other issues with that.
Well, so it's interesting because we, anything, we can't just, just say, yes, we want to do that. We have to go up in front of the voters and, you know, have to make a determination if they want to do that. But we put this, we're going to talk about it tonight, it's just this conversation. And Matt LaFave came to Karen and I this morning, he's like, I got to talk to you guys about this. Do you remember? And so when we, a year of '21, 2021, we were talking about the, the way the water was flowing off the end of School Street and into the creek and runoff over by Dr. Lee's house where, where there was an issue of erosion and we had an issue of erosion come back up. And there was a question of who was responsible for that. And so they looked into it, the town did, and it was determined that part of, after doing all of that research, they realized that the Peru Central School District actually owns part of the land under the road. And so what I want to show you is, and Matt is the one who connected the dots between the orange, the yellow and the green today. He's like, oh my gosh, you have to share this with them too. I'm like, you're coming to the meeting, let me do the, no, I can't. So anyway, I want you to understand, so here's School Street. This is the piece of land here that the, that the town would have made the road on whenever they built the road. And this, which is actually under School Street, is Peru Central School land. So I think my recommendation would be, when we move forward with this, so there's one more to you again. So you can see, so this was the survey, surveyors, when they actually did that look back in 21, this is what they, they showed. So that green, again, under School Street, so you see it better here, under School Street and then had it curved towards Ramon Wetz's house, it wouldn't have been a property and it would have been covered with that yellow. So I think when we, depending on what the, you know, how the board wants to move forward, we should be having a conversation with Jackie's office about getting rid of all of that. We don't, we don't want to own land under the road. Especially anyone who knows that, that intersection across from the middle school in the morning is a hot mess on a good day. So at the end of the day, I think that we should, if we're going to be saying, look, we're willing to get rid of that land, that little piece of yellow, we should be talking about getting rid of the, the whole thing and saying to the town here and then.
And I don't think Mr. Barber was aware of.
I don't think so either. I think that that was at, you know what I mean? Because it was only Matt today who said to me, look, wait, I think this is the, I said, no, Matt, wasn't it back during the, because my, my brain was back at the, near the tennis courts. So if you drive down School Street, you remember the house that kind of sat, that they tore down and kind of made you do this down School Street? That's where I thought there was something in that, in that woods. He says, no, no, it's down by the middle school. And so he got on his stuff today and he didn't care, I didn't color any.
Because Mr. Barber only came with the yellow and the orange. That's all he thought was, was the parcel that the school owned and the town owned. So now we have to sit down with the town attorney, you know, our, our attorney and point all this out. But my understanding is this will have to be brought to the voters in May.
Has the, has the town expressed interest in accepting ownership? Because they've only talked to us about the yellow. They've only talked to us about
The yellow and the orange.
The yellow and the orange.
The yellow is ours.
But they, they've only talked about, they want, they would like to be able to give away the orange and they'd like to be able to give away this yellow too.
What about the culvert that's up and looks like, to me, looks like that's the problem, that parade down at the end of the green?
Give me over here.
Right in there, the culvert, is that part of Peru's school? Or is the green consists of that culvert that runs along School Street going to Dr. Kim's house? It's sticking up out of the ground and the ground is sometimes against.
I believe that was part of what the
That's part of the green?
So it's on our property.
It's on our property.
So I think
We want it in the yard.
We believe it's the light of my home.
Well, the road itself could be technically the town's property, just, we just own the land here. Well, that's
That's why we need to
I think that that all needs to be
So we could move the term.
So I can come back to the board after meeting. I just wanted to bring that to you, share it with you so that you can see what we're talking about and then I'm scheduling a meeting to meet with them.
So no action on that.
Just information.
We certainly don't need.
I do appreciate the tone.
Well, I appreciate that, Matt, because when I shared, we were really no green, we were talking about orange and yellow. And he's like, wait a minute, and then they came out this morning, I'm like, I don't think you're talking the same thing. Yes, I am, let me show you, so.
No, I think you need to also, the town needs to realize that we need to Okay, so that, that is for further discussion, we can not do anything on that. The other piece was during this webinar for board leadership, they mentioned the governance manual, which we, handbook, which we started two years ago. We haven't done anything on it. Sherry's put it out to you. We haven't done anything on it, Sherry's put it out to you. I can also send you the template that, I'll send it to Sherry, she can post it, too. There's a template for the handbook, and we've kind of followed that, too. We need to clean up our policy, because there's certain board policies that probably need to be referred to in the handbook.
So the good news is we have a meeting on the sixth, what day?
November seventh.
Thank you. November seventh with Jessica, for the board to have a conversation about policy, so.
Okay. Okay.
And those things that we need to.
Good. So it's out there, just take a look at it. Hopefully, it could be one of our goals to have it completed in, you know, like, January, to take a look at. And I'll, I'll make sure I send the template out, I forgot to do that. But I'll send the template out, so that we can see the template. And I think ours is pretty, pretty much done, you know? We've probably made it, edited a little bit out of it, so it's more to say that we're okay with that. So again, no action, we're just, you know, look at that handbook, but that was one of the things we were, actually, at a board meeting last year, we were at a board meeting, and we had a panel of board members, and I mentioned the governance manual, and there was nobody in our.
I was at CBS, right?
Yeah, CBS, there was nobody in our local counties that had a governance manual started, we have, so we're up on that one. Okay, information pertaining to the use of charter coach buses?
Sure, so on charter buses, what, what we're doing right now, and I, did I connect something to that?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, what, Dave, that you knew as, what buses we had used.
And so we also, we also established a protocol as well, that, that I think is going to help us in regards to, when we have a group that's going to use a charter bus, some of the, some of the steps we would require them to do, which would be to check this website, in addition to it, would be to, if, we establish some checks in there, so that not only does the advisor or the per, the adult that's, that's setting up the charter bus have to do, but then also administration would sign off, I would sign off, so that we are able to look at that. Fortunately for us, we weren't in any of those situations where, where we have a bus that, or that was on that list. And Dave, I think it's really important that Dave is part of that, too, and he'll be a double check for us. And, you know, one of the things that he did talk to me about is coming over to a bus, so, you know, is, he comes over and takes a look at a charter bus when they're here, he looks at some very easy visual things, from tires to lights to those types of things. But he and I had this conversation about the importance of the protocol, and the protocol is definitely something that I shared with him, I wrote it in the meeting, that that was, he had a few things to, and thought that it would be a really good, important piece that we would share as a white page memo to our staff, letting them know that if you are a, a club, that you're going to get a, a charter bus of any kind, then we need to file this extra, this.
What, extra stamp?
So I think that that will probably address some of the concerns that we're having.
It was nice to see that we were not on the list, we use, what was it, First Transit here? I don't, Premier, Premier, right, Premier out of Albany and Burlington. We don't use First Transit, and that was one of the ones that was not.
And interestingly enough, when I asked people, I wanted to go back in time to find out, like, I was like, well, for my three years, talk about, you know, where we're going, everyone that I talked to, a bunch from the back, it's just in that one. And so they wanted to make sure, so I'm confident that we're in a good place in that. And I think that the idea of a protocol is really important.
Okay, so you'll bring the protocol to us next month?
Yep, so I, I thought that it was attached, but.
No, you just attached it.
It was just a list of buses.
Yeah, just right.
Thank you, Stella. I will, I will also, just so you know, I will, because we're talking about, share the, share the protocol with you, and I will use.
It's really coming from, you know, there was Max in Orange County.
Yes, terrible, correct.
And the bus was one of the ones that hadn't been inspected.
For years.
Yep.
So I just want to play back this, very likely, so I'll play back four years. We have a protocol in place now, it's going to be sent out to.
We will, when we vote.
Well, you don't have to grow a protocol. So what I'll do is I'll share, share the protocol Friday with you, and so you'll have, you'll have that. Obviously, if there's, if there's something you think of, right, that we might have missed, I'm always open to suggestions.
Okay.
But we don't need a full amount of protocol. So the good news is, I, I'm remiss in not having it here for you tonight, but I will definitely share it out with you.
Thank you.
It has been existing, I assume, like, it has been existing for this protocol, but given some of the best that I've had, there's, there's no way there's going to be.
Well, no, and that's why there's enough, it will have enough steps in the process that, just like, different requests, right? Building use request goes to the principal, to Matt LaFave, that kind of thing, it will bounce around. It'll be the same thing with this particular one, and we'll, I'll work with Nick to create some kind of electronic form that we can also incorporate into this protocol. That's not been done yet, but the protocol talks of all the steps.
I assume that the administrators and, or, like, with Amy, so they would know if somebody was going to be probably in a position where they would probably even be asking for it first.
Sure, but again, they would also know, like, administration at any level, depending if it's athletics, Amy's going to know about it, like, the high school principal's going to know about it, and.
So they would know to help them step through the process.
Sure, and we have a, we have an area we keep, like, those are things I put out to people, so.
And are you basically, what, seven charter buses we've used in the past, last many years, right?
Yeah.
We don't have dozens of these things screened through all.
We're up here in the north country, we're lucky we can get our hands on one.
Yeah. We've got lots of those.
And they come out of Albany and Burlington?
Right. Yeah.
Which is good, because the one in Plattsburgh was one of the ones on the list.
Premier, is that a, right?
Premiers, yeah.
Premier.
Albany and Burlington. First Transit was out of Plattsburgh, and that one was on the list. But, well, we, we didn't, we're not in a region that was even marked. Okay, any public comments? Okay. Motion to return.
Motion.
Mr. Peters. Second, second.
He's relishing in.
Second, Mrs. Mitchell, all things. Thank you for being patient tonight, this has been a long meeting, and we appreciate that.